No, we're not. And the real question is, why is it two summers of y'all?
That looks huge. Okay, I think we're gonna start with our council meeting. We're gonna start with eleven legions. We've done bar.
I collect the legions due to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, welcome to the, uh, town of Bar River. Gossiping. I didn't know we had bar in our board. I would entertain a motion to, well, first be, I need excuse for the law. He's not here, he's out. Margaret Huggins, PJ Stokes, Nick Boy. Uh, can I have a motion to approve DJ?
I'll go.
What's that about? The first and the second, any discussion? All in favor? I am. Opposed? All in favor? Uh, can I have a motion to approve June tenth, twenty twenty-five, twenty minutes?
I'm going to motion to approve July tenth, uh, minutes.
June?
June, June tenth, minutes.
Can I second you guys?
Any discussion on, on that? Okay, the motion and the second, all in favor?
I am.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve our vouchers so we can pay the bills?
Can I have your approval of the vouchers?
Okay.
One second.
So the first and the second, on approving the vouchers, all in favor?
I am.
Uh, can I have a motion to acknowledge the June twenty twenty-five financial statement?
I'm going to motion to, to June twenty twenty-five financial statement.
One second. One second.
The first and the second, all in favor?
I am.
No.
Thank you. BJ, you want to take that first?
Yeah.
I need to approve.
Wait, no, please, I need to pause up for the, the meeting.
Just say, will you, BJ, can you take the second one? Number two?
Yeah, I'll take the second.
And then, uh, will you take all this number one? We're gonna open that. The legions won't do that. You, you take the.
There's no.
Okay. Okay, we ready for?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Alright, so I move to approve resolution twenty dash zero five, a resolution of the town council, or the town council of Bar River, Wyoming amending the fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget to include the previously unrecognized funds from grant CW C one five two two zeros.
One second. The first and the second, all in favor?
I am.
BJ meant say twenty-five, one twenty. You said twenty-one, twenty.
Yeah, twenty-two-five, twenty-twenty-six. That, that's what we were talking about. It, it was close, it's not made up there.
I know, you meant. We're losing control here. Yeah, we are.
Make a motion to resolve the twenty-five oh dash zero six, a resolution to accompany the twenty, twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six financial year proposed budget ordinance establishing all fees, costs, and charges to be collected for services, utilities, securities, security, or other town purpose during the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six financial year. Repeating her to amend.
Okay, we have a resolution, all in favor?
Aye.
I am.
We have a second.
I'll second it, yeah, I guess, sorry, sorry.
Okay.
Yep. You got a second?
Yeah, I'm second, we got, we're there, second.
All in favor?
I am.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna open a bid for the water truck for the nineteen sixty-four Peterbilt water truck. The flip, bar, can you flip this out, how long ago?
It was, uh, a month ago.
Month ago?
Yeah, we got a place, Wyson, and it's paper.
Okay, so we got, let's see, one bid?
Yes.
Okay.
A lot of things.
You see the truck, you want us to walk?
Yeah.
Toby Drew. Fifty-seven, fifty-eight, I weigh eighty-nine. Fifteen hundred dollars? Awesome, wow. Okay, we can put this toward the basketball.
So, what do I need to do here, what? Do I need to make a motion to approve?
Yeah.
Can I have, I'm gonna entertain a motion to accept a bid for fifteen hundred dollars from Toby Drew for the nineteen sixty-four Peterbilt water truck. And I'll move to approve Toby's bid. I'll second it. All in favor?
I am.
Toby Drew, get your truck. Wait, bring cash for it.
Remember, as is.
Oh, we did say that, as is.
As is, yes.
They're just little sloths.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we're gonna get into old business, um.
I move to approve table with their breathing ordinance, twenty twenty-five dash zero one, until August twelfth, twenty twenty-five council meeting.
I'll second it. We have the first and the second, all in favor?
I am.
Thank you, BJ.
Reports, planning and zoning, we kind of beat that up a little bit today, I think. Like a dead horse, but we've created a, a planning advisory committee, gotta do that right, so we'll be working on that. I'll, I'll get together if everybody will get, they put the others to do that price and get working on stuff, so.
There was, but just on that, we haven't had any new building permits at SARS council meeting, but I do have somebody that's gonna be submitting a building permit for the building out in Conset. And we call it this, and we, we should, we don't need to, because we're in a college with international IBC, UBC, now, I'm gonna address Conset, that's hard for me.
Does he have a set of plans to come?
He's going to provide a seven million for his issue.
Do you have to maintain that back?
I, I did our white Conset hut, and I, I paid the extra because at first I was thinking about actually building a house out of it. So I had to do the hammer metal, so I got an engineering staff quick when I made the month. But the middle, I got all this up with it, it's still, still a little rainy for shit.
And that's, that's one of the discussions, and really, that's what brought us to the planning and zoning ordinance, was as we look at some of the buildings that are being built in town are unsafe and unsightly. And the unsafe part is what I'm worried about for the building. Is good strong wind and heavy snow will blow over, so that's what initiated this.
And that was one of the big drivers.
That was a big driver, and then all this other stuff coming in, we thought, let's go ahead and keep moving. So. Roads, Dave, well, they've been laid and ragged and raining on them already.
You know, and it's quite honest, we had a pretty good rainstorm because year map was about, rust down all sides of the road again, and the miles on the road, so it's, it's not shiny, so those will be pretty tough to manage, yeah. But I think they'll be just fine until fall.
Good. Um, you like? Go ahead, it's hard. Nope, we're gonna.
We didn't have to pave those roads.
At least the main one.
Yeah, there's no training, you just bent them.
Still wouldn't, still wouldn't touch.
Now, we got all these programs up there, I'm walking, we're like, I have streets and stuff. So, there you go.
Well, no, that, that's a good question, I asked that, Dave, when I came in, I talked to Dave about that. One of our biggest drivers here is lack of revenue. You look in that town, they got a C store, they've got restaurants, they've got, they've got, they have a source of revenue. We, we don't have a source of revenue other than saying, okay, if we're gonna pave the road past White House, we're gonna raise the fees, a hundred fifty bucks a month, a week and four to do it.
Isn't that the only area of revenue?
No, they're not there, they're in the town. The lumberyard company, right?
Oh, my, oh, my girl.
Oh, my, I'm sorry, but I heard lumberyard, and I stopped, I was, um, so it was, you know, people can see, well, we don't have the population of lumberyards.
And most, well, not most, just about every single time that the state of Wyoming comes to the town, it pays on the population. And you, and you got five hundred and twenty-six people. So our portion of the, the funds that stay out, kids, and children, about that figure. And to pave the wild road, you're looking at several million dollars. It used to be a million dollars in wild, twenty years ago, and now it's substantially higher than that.
It, it amazes me, Paul, the amount of money that the state of Wyoming gets and how much they don't give back. There is a real disconnect between municipalities and that next layer of government. Because, one example, we have to take a test and be fi- financially capable of taking care of public funds. We do, but they don't.
So, can I ask anything, we get that?
Well, that's what we're looking for.
Right, it's our.
Yeah, yeah, that, that helps. We can get half a million dollars a year, now that's off traffic, and if we get that half a million dollars a year, that helps with a lot of these horses.
There's, we like weight on the track, it's on, that's, that's.
Well, these racehorses, back to that planning and zoning, you can truck, trailer, semi, so hey, unloading on the road, what's that doing to the road? Hey, knows that, you know that, you know that, you know? Traffic is, and the speed at which everybody's going.
Yes, that's really.
They just get cooking right over that hill where you're at.
And then, for, 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 I seen here, scrambling, she wasn't standing there, yeah.
Sewer water, Dave?
Um, not much to report, we're quiet right now. We, we, we are discussing ours, with the proposed annexation of those subdivisions. Other than that, I'd talk great, as good as it came, and everything's fine.
Thank you. Nathan, tire, help your tire be?
Pretty good, uh, we have a budget for this year perhaps, um, we took, uh, a hundred sixty thousand dollar hit for, for revenue tax cuts. Um, but Eric, uh, Eric Hudson made the work. And we're able to also get, uh, some raises for the full-time employees. Other than that, uh, the county has finally approved, uh, Rockland Communications to come in and start looking at all the radio towers, uh, because the radio issues were poisonous today. Um, they've already found a couple in the, couple issues in the family that they've addressed, and uh, when we were over there for the last meeting, you can actually hear the calls coming through in the firehouse, which was, which is great. So they're continuing to, to find out everything that's going on, and why everything's system's not working, and we'll, we'll take, remember once we do the fire report.
The major fire, shoot, fire reports?
No, it's, you weren't here before, so I were.
I got in late that night.
Oh, it rains cats, dogs.
Yeah. I only took heat, more person. No, a lot of kids.
Yeah.
That's good. Had a lot of water. Was a lot of water.
Uh, irrigation, Dave, uh, I don't have more water than this.
Me either.
If you look, if you look, we can't, but anyway, um, right now, water, we got, we're, I mean, I don't see if it's made better. According to the water master, the Bear River itself is under regulations, so that means people down country are pumping water, so AKA the narrows. Um, that's sort of last of all, two more weeks, and then they're gonna not need it anymore. And after that, they'll start working on, um, restrictions as far as water, water, and water, and we got. Traveler said we're probably good for at least two, maybe three more.
So nice, that's better than I would have thought.
Yeah.
I'm thanking for the water you don't have. Right? I'm down three.
So, but if you have, if you have an issue with the highway crossing, I got here, I got neighbors who created dams and low corridors. You gotta, they call me, but, um, we need to get, I'm gonna say a specialized PC equipment.
Clean out that cover, to get that, that water.
And what we got?
Tenterite?
What's that?
Tenterite.
I was thinking that.
Oh, my, tenterite.
Tenterite, tenterite's a little bit, I watched, that's true. We've got, we're gonna create irrigation, uh, one that we were looking at, you know, that, that's more, we got a lot of new people in here, to their defense, they've never seen the high water, and they've never seen the no water. And, and you and I have, and live out there, and Tony, you have, and, and I mean, when it's high, it's high, it comes in the middle of the night, it's too late then. So that, that's why we're looking at those offenses, so, you know, we keep watching. Now, all the years I've been here, I think I mentioned, you, last year, when I got cut off early, was it sand, called for water, and then all of a sudden you got water for a little while?
No, it wasn't sand, it was, um, it, it was just across the Utah line. And, and, you know, I, I would take care of it out on that. Because the, the Bear River runs through two states, basically. And, and all three states, they, they all want the water.
And I heard something like, well, it's a two.
And it raised all right. You know, and so, so what, 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 all that? Utah, I don't still want the water, and Trevor, I think, does an amazing job keeping all the water in the way, I think. And that's a really, probably a crisis, and man is totally appreciative, and he doesn't, he doesn't.
Yeah, we, we appreciate the water, yeah, for sure. Um, that's it. Thank you. Dean, have you got, maybe I usually skip over you, do you got anything to add, any of that?
Anything to add, but I, I do, there is a law that was passed by the legislature that I'm looking at now, I do not think it's going to be intact Bear River at all, it depends, it's, uh, dealing with transgender bathroom, uh, use, and instead of the state, this is how state works, instead of them making, uh, criminal offense that's tied to disorder of conduct, or, or something else, they basically told all of the governments that if there's a complaint and you don't do something about it, um, then you lose your governmental immunity if you're sued. So, that, there's, there's, there's an outlawing on, on, on things, and what we have to do, like, I've gone through my mind for public actions we have in this area. I don't think it's gonna be taxed at all, but when we put something together so everybody can see, so as we grow, or, or do some different things, signs we'll have to post.
What does that mean, though? I think signs that everyone can use, that they're exactly, you have a.
Just the opposite, um. Basic summary is, if, if somebody who's born a male, no matter what they might look like, they're crenlocked. They cannot use a woman's bathroom. Um, but if there's a complaint, let's say you're at the rec center, and somebody comes in, and somebody finds and says, I think that's men, and they run and tell people, you know, I think that person's a man, that, that everyone definitely needs to do something about that, which could be as simple as posting a sign that says, this is a women's bathroom, and it's defined in state statute as this, and no entrance in, somebody does not be good, you know, there's.
But they still have the right, what's wrong?
Yes, they have.
Which one you did?
Uh, in, in the state of Wyoming, a woman is a person who was born with the, with the facilities that would be able to allow the production that passes the day, and then is defined as, as those persons, uh, born with ability to reproduce, and that's, that's how it falls, and it doesn't matter where, and, and they, they.
I guess it'll build out if we get into it, huh? So, uh, sign says, women, women's, or men's, isn't that pretty obvious, that's what?
Yeah.
If it was obvious, we would not need to.
Well, thank you, we just have too many people making laws.
That's right.
Any items from the floor? Have you guys done anything else?
No, thank you.
Man, thank you guys. Any other discussion?
Yeah, there's a couple things.
Okay.
Okay, we do not, um, we'll need to now make a motion to, like, Michael Parks, the economic development. And also, in order to that, July twenty-seventh, the Bear River Day is the racetrack, that's on a Sunday. Okay, and they'll need to know if they're wanting to, if they need to say there's a table.
Or we're here for.
Maybe for the, for the mayor, you know, what was it made, the twenty-seventh, July twenty-seventh, October.
Say there's a table, we'll find somebody to go. You guys start the meeting, I think, we'll go. I don't. Yeah, okay, give us, give us, here, we got you. Somebody.
Maybe we can do the.
I make the motion to appoint Michael Parks to the unit county economic development board. Second.
We need.
Oh, I'll second. We have a first and a second, any discussion? You, all in favor?
I am.
Thank you. Yeah. Meeting adjourned.
What time is it? Thank you.
Seven oh nine. Thank you for coming, thanks for reading more of the process. Steve Mignano. Except for me, yeah.
Since you can't figure out one of the women's bathrooms. I know where it is, but everyone I go in there, you get trouble.
As you should.
My wife, she tells the area, like, get out, never get out with a kid.
Thanks for coming, Rick, Tony. Can we, can we, do it? It's only, thank you for coming. It's gonna take you, man.
We, we discussed, I know that we were gonna do that, but I, I'm gonna stop, I have a baby.
And that was, yeah, still, we're trying to find property, helping get there, and other, because I go to hospitals, and also. Where you going?
Go, yeah.
Wait, wait, you got a load on that, we're gonna go.
We gotta go on the agenda.
I don't hear, I don't have Nick over at my house for asking. I don't do anything. Margaret, we said it, Hutchinson, Ryan, it would be ill for something.
Well, come on, we appreciate you, thank you.
Thank you.
I do really appreciate you talking to us. Cool, thank you for having me, so pardon me, that's a big song. Hey, see you guys.
Do you think, yes, when you remember when, like, the man, the man, the man, the woman, the woman, the woman.
Looking at the face, but he's. You. Especially if it's really serious. Yeah. Wait, he's gotta leave that, I got, you remember, attending everybody's wedding.
Yeah, thank you for that idea.
My boy, he's gonna be noisy, because he's in the next word.
That they do, they do something.
He's going to class, he'll probably class answer, so. His, his wife.
Um, the victim is.
Yeah, sure, I love that, we can ask it, right? We just get a link on that website, and then we just go to the.
I'd like to go, it's, it's on the wall, just.
I know, but there we go.
Check it out.
You're awesome, thank you. Oh crap, I'm gonna start this, I mean, yes.
Yeah, but your fantasy there is.
Warriors.
Yes, dear.
Can't.
You cannot possibly take one more job, let me do it.
You can. That, that job already is a job.
Warriors, and warriors, who are so long, you know, it's, we don't, uh.
Do you like?
Oh, yeah, that's what I said.
I'm glad Toby gives, because he's got another truck exactly the same, so he just wants to, okay, maybe when I was on, I, I told him I was with that last one. Okay.
Yeah, I was with the, I don't want to.
Well, well, these guys, they're new, I've heard, because they said the racetrack wanted a bag. Like, what did they do?
Well, because we already committed, uh, to put it up, but then we were talking about.
Yeah, but they, they wanted to, they're gonna be on, would they?
Well, we, we told them.
Toby, this is our time, it's the mayor's.
Sucker.
That's the time, or the season.
But yeah, as far as that letter goes, we actually started talking about it.
Okay.
If they annex in, it's gonna create some water line connection right outside the downs, and it'll give us deep kind of downs, at that point, so hey, we've got all this stuff right here, but here right now.
Well, it's gonna be, I mean, we got the letter, move the times right.
Mm-hmm.
I just thought we were, but, I mean, well, it changes, it changes all the time.
Yeah.
Quick question, I'll shoot you a day.
We, or, so much, we kill twelve on the, along the road.
I think someone is asking about. What? They should be spraying to eat, don't we, uh, it's fine to be done, yeah.
Our, 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 Dave May.
Yes, Scott May. Yeah.
With some great thistle. And then, across the road, can we spray between the road and our pants?
We're gonna have that discussion tomorrow. Cause I already brought that up today, with Dave.
Okay, cause I know that at one time.
Make sure you sign the cap, too. Do you need to do anything with this, 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 are you all gone? Yes, he needs to sign the voucher.
What's mad?
What voucher? These vouchers. One of them's been on the, um, succeed, and he's going to the market to.
We're gonna have that session tomorrow.
What, Dave?
Yeah.
Okay, because Wolf Greg, they put, um, they'll, they'll do, do in the road.
No, we have the stuff from the.
And it crossed, and it crossed the road, which, um, the mild thistle.
Well, thistle was box tail, and he can hear to that box tail, the position, knock it down.
Yeah.
So, uh, let's have those guys back in the hole, that box tail, size of roads.
But we get that normally. See, I think they start.
You're around in the morning. Yeah, normal. Can I go?
Yeah.
And move on.
Yeah, because I don't know what, what, can you?
I'm, I'm swaying good.
Oh, I don't either, I just need clothes there, so.
Well, there's a chat there, but we just have some of that.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Stop by, I'll give you a coffee back, Rick. Hey, Chris, stop by and I'll give you a coffee back. Four months.
Okay, if you call during the morning, then.
So I'm good.
No, just as a task, you see, Mark? That's a bad one. I don't have a voucher.
I have to apologize because I got a little, testing with a friend, Sean. I said, look, there's one. We need to be an active participant once in a while.
When I started having that conversation with the horseman? It is what it is, like, for him to call you, whether they have this one, for ten bucks, let's say about nine, ten bucks.
So I'm still asking the question, am I supposed to have it if it's licensed? Or because I work from home and I get a paycheck, so I have a damn?
No.
No.
Here's, here's what we decided, we gotta figure out and put it in. Is anything, business that's in conditional use permit that goes with it, anything that affects your neighbors or the surrounding people around you or the community? Like, what's our traffic coming through, horse traffic in and out? Red horses and lions, right?
You should, don't, the way you is here.
How's that business, you have?
Well, he, but he, he starts to get to the business one, he, he started on a business, like, I, yeah, he'll not have one. Are you talking about, yeah, I'm, I'm. Who are you talking about? Oh, the, the ladies kids that at the end of the road screams up and down the road. Oh, I don't want to, Ellen Repoca? Yes. Do they have a business? No, no, I just put back to the, their scheme. Screaming down the road. We need some tips, really, don't we?
All you gotta do is, according to, uh, sheriff, call, is get a picture of their drivers or a tractor.
License plate.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Number, and send it to him, and he'll take care of it.
Or is that, I'm saying that I'd be more trouble to help you out. Is that a sexual or not?
What do you mean?
The bomb?
I did tell you, they'll leave your code of enforcement on, so nothing. It worked.
We find him.
Thank you, guys, for your input, your stuff you do, Nick, I apologize, I should have wrapped it before the meeting, we just get to study it, I mean, all my work is done.
Talking to me a little bit, like, stuff changes, especially after a meeting, you need to change the whole. The whole vibe on everything.
Yeah, we gotta have one person that says, ah, I don't have this. And here we go.
I need to understand the process a little more because I don't want every time we kick it out there, somebody to come and say.
Well, maybe if someone wants, it's your decision, council, you can listen to this.
And we don't.
Yes, you, you might think it's a dumb decision, I have to see something, you're, you're willing to, you should let the one that's saying the thing.
It's gonna be interesting, people, yeah.
It's, it's next.
By the way.
Can you spell wrong? No.
You're a killer?
No, agitate.
And I, and I see, whatever that one, it doesn't matter if you're spelling in your name.
Well, they have, they have, they have challenges. It's German, it's the German word.
But you're French.
Yeah.
You're still French? Or can you stand?
No. I had a scam, I had a scam for years, and then obviously, we had that down for about.
Is that kinda like the hand that the Vikings uses?
I got that scam from. I just started, I had a scam, a thousand. Well, they might have just passed it, but I didn't get to that anymore. Why did you, why did you say that, did you say? Because the state that the, I, I stand, I stand. And nobody's ever said we can't access. And, you know, I think they just get around out of the Indian, I have a reason.
Right?
But I'm sure I can, it's on my, yeah. Anyway, excited.
Yeah, you all seem to, yes, true. You can go, okay, vouchers. One question do you have on that, Mark? Could we get that information for you?
If I, I'm behind, look, I'm back to that.
I'm not trying to stretch you out, I'm just.
I'm gonna get to answer, I'll, you might guess, yeah.
Really, that is gonna sound a, kind of, that's gonna just make sure we've got everything ready for them.
Yeah. How, how would you like that, probably?
Well, if.
Because that's my mail, but we don't have any, no, today.
And that's before.
Well, you, I have to be yourself.
I know, I was sitting here talking, that's what I'm saying.
What's this sixteen thousand dollars to the car and we got a fire for that, and we pay three mils and I'm never here. Well, there you go, man, here's your sixteen thousand dollars.
Oh, you must talk to him.
No, how, what would you like, the, the stamps are going, I, I have a, a word clock. But if you want him for that.
Well, you can see how busy he gets and, uh, oh, this is not a very good town.
She knows that future. That's why she sent her daughter. What is your on that agenda?
No, the.
The vouchers.
Oh, vouchers, oh, okay, that's a question. Sure, I don't see answer for that.
Why do you need the twenty-seven thousand to pay off the?
I'm asking the building, like, not equipment, right?
They have to. The one that we, we had released, a thousand dollars. On savings, and, and, and I tell them to.
You can always play counting games, you can appropriate, learn to get some of these things down. And shift where the money is coming from.
Names?
Need something like that.
Yes. Yeah.
Well, maybe you can say something to people on the record. Oh.
Don't go back and look at it, Dave, you don't wanna, Parker, you don't wanna hear what she said about you.
What's humane, having traitors or something like that? That's not fair, the money would be borrowed, there's a bunch of them.